Councilmember Toby Gilli has our prayer and pledge this morning. Mr. Gilli?
Would you bow with me, please? Dear God, I most loving heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this day that you've given us. We thank you for all the many blessings you've stowed upon us. Fathers, we come together this morning to make decisions for this city. Give us your wisdom and your guidance. Dear God, in your son's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Murfreesboro City Council, July 2nd, 2012, 7:00 a.m. in the morning. That's unusual, certainly in my term as mayor. This morning on our agenda, we have a resolution to consider imposing a temporary emergency and mandatory ban on the use of fireworks. And we have, I guess, Mr. City Manager, you may have some comments you'd like to bring to us. I see we have some of our fire department personnel, our chief, our fire marshal, other interested parties, and certainly we welcome those of you who are here this morning. So, Mr. Lyons, if we'd like to hear from you first, that'd be fine.
Yes, sir. What we've got before you this morning is Resolution 12 R-13. As the mayor and council is aware, the city has permitted the use of fireworks during the Fourth of July and New Year's holidays. But this year, we've experienced extremely dry conditions. In fact, the city has gone and banned open burning as a result of these dry conditions. Secondly, we've also encouraged the voluntary cutting back of water consumption because of the dry conditions. After consultation with our fire rescue department, we have determined that, you know, the dry weather does certainly pose an increased risk and threat with the use of fireworks. So, we have looked at the fire code, which does allow the discontinuance of the use of fireworks during hazardous conditions. Certainly, if there were a fire in a situation like this, it'd be a very difficult situation for our firefighters. So, we did prepare this resolution, which would declare the weather conditions a threat in a local natural emergency, and the use and lighting of fireworks from June 28th to July 5th would be prohibited. We do have our fire and rescue staff here should you have additional questions. But we do present this to you for your consideration. That would ban the use of fireworks in Murfreesboro. This resolution would not apply to fireworks that would be permitted by the state. That would be done by a professional pyrotechnic company.
All right. You have this resolution prepared. Are there any comments or questions from Mr. Lyons regarding this resolution? Mr. McFarland?
After reading over the resolution, and Mr. Lyons, you know, this is something really have been discussed since a week ago, this past Friday. You know, anyone who walks outside on their yards and sees the area where we are right now, it doesn't take much to see that, you know, with the fires that we've had over the last week, that this is not what I would say a tough decision. But the one that there's two things that I would like to look at. If we have an open ban on burning, which means no open flames outside to be able to burn construction debris, leaves or whatever, it just makes sense to me that moving forward in the future, if we have anything that says open ban on burning, and then you have something that has fire in the name with fireworks, that those two need to be coincided together. So, moving forward, I would like us to see to have something that's in our code that says when there is an open ban on burning, that that includes precluding people to shoot fireworks. So, that way, we're not having to come in this instance that, you know, if we can't burn outside, it makes sense that we shouldn't shoot things that we like with fire. So, the one thing I would like to see in the resolution that we do change is, in my opinion, it's too date specific right now. We don't know where we're going to be in July 6th on the weather and being dry. So, I would like it to, in section one, that it says the city declares a state of local natural emergency until the fire marshal lifts the open burn per, the open burn ban. That makes sense to me. Can we do that, Mr. Ives?
We could. But, Mr. McFarland, under our, chapter 12 of our city code, seasonal use of fireworks is only allowed for about a week and a half period for July 4th and New Year's. So, as it states in section 12 dash 27, fireworks may only be used within the city between June 28th and July 5th.
Okay.
And between December 26th and January 2. So, that was the reason for our July 6th date in this resolution. After that-
They can't be shot anywhere.
Casual use of fireworks is prohibited within the city of Murfreesboro. Again, a state licensed show for an event could happen at other times, other than on July 4th. But the casual use by individuals or unlicensed groups is prohibited-
Okay.
With the small exception of this Fourth of July period and the New Year's period.
I would like to request, I know Ms. Gannon, or Ms. McGannon already had a family commitment that she had planned, and thank you for being here, Mr. Ives.
My pleasure.
But if we could work on moving forward, having something that we could all discuss about if there is the open, an open burn ban issued by the fire marshal and the fire department, that we also look at including fireworks in that, that, that course?
I think it could make good sense that if there's an open burn ban during this period of time, when fireworks are allowed, then that it would automatically be covered.
Okay.
I think that makes good sense, and we'll certainly work with the fire department and police department and Ms. McGannon when she gets back and make sure there's not a problem. But I would think that could be incorporated.
The last thing I would like to say, I put this out on my Facebook page, I guess it was late Friday night, around 11 o'clock. And since that time period, I think I'm up to 100 and some odd comments, just in that short time period, or notes that, and there's not really been one person who's been against this. So, I think everyone has looked at it and said, "It makes common sense." So, that's just where I am on it.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Smuthman?
And I reiterate what Shane says, as far as I do believe that if there's a burn ban in effect, that we definitely need to go ahead and during the time period that we do allow fireworks to be fired, that we should certainly go ahead and implement this, not only as a quick fix for this weekend or this week, but for, for future occasions. So, when this arises, we don't have to have this meeting annually, just because it's a drought or something going on. Also, the, much like Shane, I've had multiple emails come and overwhelmingly, with the exception of one person who was a fireworks vendor, everybody supports a ban on fireworks. If we continue to allow this to happen, I think it's going to occur year after year after year. And it puts us in a predicament as to decide each year whether or not we're going to have fireworks or not. Whereas, if the vendors know upfront that the fireworks could be banned because of a drought condition, then it perhaps would help them prepare for a situation. If they see that a drought is forecast, maybe they may not stock up as heavily, or certainly not open up their inventory that they might be able to return otherwise. So, I think it would be advantageous to do that. In my conversation with the vendor last night, I know that he stated that in their directions, they instruct people, if they use fireworks to water their lawn, and certainly if my neighbor were to water his lawn, I'd be all in favor of him watering my lawn at the same time. But, but when you're going through a situation like we are with water supply as well, it doesn't make sense for anybody to be watering their lawn at this point. So, again, that defies common sense, and certainly that's something I'm encouraging here. What goes up does not always come straight down in the world of bottle rockets. I don't shoot fireworks, but I clean them up on the 5th of July. So, having said that, and I'm probably not going to quote LeBron James very many times, but in this situation, I'll go ahead and do it. It's about damn time. So, let's go ahead and get this done.
Anything else?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
I have a question. And I do echo Shane and Eddie on your comments. Under this ban, we are still going to go on with celebration under the stars of fireworks?
I presume that they're excluded from this resolution.
Yeah, the resolution does exclude professionally managed shows that did receive a state permit. Spoke to Mr. Goodwin over the weekend, and he collected some information from the company who apparently shot a number of shows over the weekend, did not have any problems. Again, the fire department is going to be present for that show, so that if something did come down, they'd be there immediately to put it out. But my, Mr. Goodwin may want to speak some more to his conversations with the, with the vendor. But apparently, over the weekend, they did have a number of shows, and because they had the proper precautions, because it was professionally run, they did not experience any problems.
Well, I guess I was thinking too of our firefighters. I know they have this heavy equipment on, and it's hot with their equipment on. And also, if a fire does occur, and how dangerous that would be, how equipped is our fire department for a fire that gets out of hand? Because we're still popping fireworks on dry ground.
Yes, ma'am. We have made provisions for that. We, I think, have got three standby fire engines, fully manned, to be at that show.
But if it gets out of hand, I mean, what kind of experience do we have on like a brush fire or something like that?
Yes, ma'am. We are very experienced in that. I mean, we deal with that all the time. And, you know, we do have mutual aid agreement with our local volunteers, and if we need any more help, we're capable of getting that.
And with our firefighters, the equipment they're going to have on, I don't know what temperature that is on an ordinary day. But with 100-plus degree weather, how hot are they going to be in those uniforms? And how, as far as safety to them from heat exhaustion?
Yes, ma'am. It's extremely dangerous. That gear is great in the wintertime, but when you get temperatures like this, they can't last very long. So, they had to make provisions for that. Stay hydrated, rotate firefighters in and out, rehab. But it is extremely difficult and dangerous for them to get out of here and try to do their job.
So, a firefighter could easily, with their equipment on, safe instance, a fire does break out uncontrollably, a firefighter could easily be in gear and 200 degrees, at least with this weather and the heat from the fire?
Yes, ma'am. Again, it's extremely dangerous. That, that equipment that they wear is for their safety, it's lined very well, it's to protect them from heat and fire. And, you know, when you got it on, it's 105 degrees outside, it's extremely dangerous. There's no other way to say that. And they're at risk.
Excuse me. Ms. Harris, we've got a game plan, excuse me, in place for the public display. We will have our four-by-four, which can go off-road. We will also have our brush truck available. And we will have standby personnel. We hydrate our firefighters, and we work them in and out in shifts, so to minimize the time they're exposed to those conditions. But it's the wishes of the council as to whether or not, you know, you have that public display. We can't control the fall zone, as far as fallout from the debris, from the fireworks. But that's, that's not a fire department matter.
Right.
It's a council matter.
What do we think about that? I've had a call or two from firefighters saying that their life is going to be in extreme danger because of the heat exhaustion.
Traditionally, have we had any ground fires from the public displays?
The professionals, no.
No, sir, not to my knowledge. We've always had an engine company out there or two. We've always made provisions to deal with that if we, if we do. But to my knowledge, we've never had any incidents here locally.
Have we ever had any fires set by fireworks inside the city limits that you're aware of?
Yes, sir. We've had two this past week. And then, in the month of June, we've had about 28 grass and mulch fires, people throwing cigarettes out and whatever. I think yesterday, we had a couple of transformers that exploded and caused some grass fires. So, a lot of different things that can cause that.
So, two as to fireworks, is that right?
Pardon me?
Two as to fireworks in the last week?
Yes, sir, since the 28th.
And then, before that, 28 incidences, which are cigarettes or burning or exploding transformers. So, that's really not as many from fireworks as you've got from other causes, I mean, from that point of view?
Yes, sir. I mean, they've only been allowed to shoot since the 28th. And, you know, we put out some very good information. And I noticed in my neighborhood, you know, usually, it, starting on the 28th, the fireworks get more intense as we get closer to the Fourth of July. But I've noticed this year, I think they've listened to what we've had to say, and they're using caution. I've only had them out, I've only been out one time. We had some people over in Barfield School parking lot doing this a couple of nights ago, and I had to go over there and explain to them they can't do that on school property.
Let me mention a couple of things. And I certainly have been on both sides of this issue. And I think everyone has brought up some good points. Ms. Harris, in particular, I think that's a, if we're going to ban them for personal use, I think we ought to ban the, or at least consider a ban for our Fourth of July celebration. I do think that is dangerous. And if it's good for the goose, it's probably good for the gander. But that's up to the council. I'm on both sides of this issue. I hear our voters at all times telling us that they want us to be, respect their property rights, and respect their personal responsibility for things that they can do it. They don't need government to do it. I also know that each year, we get hundreds of calls, not wanting us to shoot or let people shoot fireworks. But this council, for a number of years, has allowed people to do that. And we, I'm sure, as recently, possibly as last Friday, were still giving out permits, is that correct, to sell? And I see Ms. Wright shaking her head up and down. We, the city was still giving people permits to sell fireworks. These are people who could reasonably expect that we allowed them to sell fireworks, and that we were still allowing it. The question that I have is that the county probably has as much risk as anybody. And what we have seen with the burning of about 25 acres in a man's barn, and we've seen on TV in Colorado, are all places that don't have fire protection, 24-hour fire and rescue departments. And we have an excellent, an outstanding fire department. And it's prepared, I think, on all occasions to do the best thing that they can do. So, I, number one, don't want us to get so overwhelmed in considering what's happened in rural areas or in areas outside our jurisdiction. We protect our citizens, our residents, our business owners, and our visitors, as well as anybody in this state, and maybe in about 10 or 15 states. So, I'm very proud of our fire department, and I don't want our people to be upset and think that we are not prepared to protect life and property in the city of Murfreesboro. I think that's very important. The county does not have that kind of fire service. And the county looked at a ban and decided that they had no authority to issue such a ban. And that concerns me also. I certainly think this is a reasonable and prudent thing to do. But I'm not sure that the city has the authority to do that. The fact that we've been issuing permits up until last Friday, and I'm certain if we don't pass a ban today, which is fine, I think we could pass a ban, we possibly would be issuing permits today to people to sell fireworks. It's, that's just part of it. So, I'm really torn here because we hear personal responsibility, personal property. We hear get government out of our lives. We've got an excellent fire department. They're prepared to do something. We're going to ask our people not to do it, but we're going to let our, our own fireworks celebration go off at Sportscom. I'm really torn on this issue, and that bothers me. I know we've got small business people here who supplement their income with part-time jobs and part-time help, and they have expended money. And we're asking them now to, to be nice about it and just close down, even though we've offered them. So, I'm really torn about this issue. And frankly, as a defender of fireworks and people's ability to sell them, because you can buy them in the county anyway, whether you buy them in the city of Murfreesboro or not, we generally have used the permit fees to pay for the extra expense of having our fire department available during the fireworks seasons. I mean, that's a way for our taxpayers not to have to pay that burden. But the permit purchasers pay that for that part of that overtime and for that ability. So, frankly, I think, after looking at everything, that we ought to pass this resolution, that we all also ought to say that we're not going to have our fireworks demonstration at Sportscom, that we ought to be against that also. If it's good for the goose, it's good for the gander. And then, possibly, the next time, I'd like to see the city staff, please prepare us a resolution that, that we don't allow selling fireworks in the city of Murfreesboro in the future. That's just my opinion. Mr. McFarland?
Mayor, I respect your opinion. The only difference I would see, I don't think we're necessarily comparing apples to apple, or apple, we're comparing apples and oranges when we're comparing the public display of shooting the fireworks and somebody shooting the fireworks in their yard. I mean, when we have the public display, we're hearing our, our chief and our fire marshal tell us that we've got four-by-four fire equipment, we've got trucks, we've got fire personnel that's on duty. So, you know, if I'm shooting fireworks out in the Blackman area, although we'll have a fire department that's close, we're not going to have those readily on hand when I'm shooting them. So, I have no problem with the public display going forward. I have faith in the fire department. You know, one thing I think that we do look at, we, we trust our professionals. And I think we have the fire marshal telling us that we're in a dangerous time to be shooting personal fireworks. And I think the thing is that we look at, these guys who are shooting the fireworks for the July 4th are professionals. I mean, they do that for a living. They're pyrotechnics, professionals. And the thing that really changed my mind, and, you know, Mr. Lyons knows, I wish we weren't issuing permits last Friday. I mean, I called last Friday, and I've told people this, I dug, dug a 600 linear foot water line last week. And normally, when you get below ground at 12 inches, you'll start seeing moisture. Two and a half feet deep, there is absolutely no moisture in the ground. It's powder. So, I mean, that just, that made up my mind nonstop to do this. So, I don't think comparing the public and the private, it's, it's apples to apples. And, and I agree, I'm perfectly fine that the council, if we feel like we need to bring a resolution up to look at banning them in the future, then I think that's something we look at. I do think that by, by tying a fireworks permit and a burn ban permit together, you're accomplishing the public safety need that we need to have. So, I mean, that just makes sense. So...
Mr. Gilli?
I agree with and respect pretty much everything that's been said this morning. I think one thing we need to point out, though specifically, we've said we've had two fires as a result of fireworks since the 28th. Well, today's just July the 2nd. So, that's two fires in three days. And that, those statistics are overwhelming, I think, when you put it in those terms. And I think this is just the common sense thing to do for this season. And with that, I would move for adoption of the resolution.
Second?
Do you have a motion? Second, any comment?
Mayor, if I may, this resolution prohibits the person from using, from setting off or shooting fireworks, other, if it stays as is, other than for the state licensed event. This does not require that our vendors stop selling fireworks. This does not close down any fireworks stand. They're still free to sell fireworks if you have a permit to do so. Frankly, it, we would not have the time at this point to go through the legal process to revoke the permit that they have been given. And so, this prohibits the use, but it does not prohibit purchase and sale. So, a person can buy fireworks, and the vendors can sell fireworks within the city. They cannot be used at this time. The resolution contemplates at least the possibility that council would open up a time in the future for a fireworks display. I think, I expect that it will rain sometime again, and that conditions will return more nearly to normal. Council will not be obligated to create a weekend or a week when people can shoot off fireworks. And at this time, it would, the fireworks that they have could be used, could be kept and could be used for the Christmas, New Year's period. So, we're not, not closing down any of the vendors and not prohibiting purchase, only prohibiting the use of the fireworks here within the city.
Any other questions or comments on the motion?
And I think the, the way it's written, and I know you implied that you would favor canceling the Fourth of July fireworks display, public display, but the ordinance does not cover that. That's correct, right?
The resolution at this time would allow the city's display on the Fourth.
Right.
Now, if at council's wish, we can amend that resolution. But, and I believe the motion is to pass the resolution as written, and that would mean that the city celebration can go forward on the Fourth.
Yeah. And I don't agree with the goose and gander scenario in this, or the gander and goose, whichever way you want to put it. But the, this situation of us having public fireworks, I think may actually act as a deterrent to people trying to use fireworks on their own personal property. So, I think it may actually be beneficial to us to have the public fireworks display with the professional fireworks, fires, launching the pyrotechnics people firing them, and the fire department already on property, prepared to deal with any situation that might arise. I think we've got that covered. So, certainly, I agree with the motion, and I think it's a good idea for us to go ahead and approve it.
I have a comment.
Ms. Harris?
I understand, and I agree with what we're saying. But it's just like giving a child a toy at Christmas and then telling them they can't play with it. I do understand that we're going to have the professionals there at the fireworks display. And our fire department is A1. I put our fire department up against any fire department in the United States. I'm still looking at the fact that we're going to have firefighters, and they risk their lives every time they go to fires. I understand that. But we're talking about firefighters in uniforms that can easily be 200 degrees. And we are running to our cars just to get in a car right now, as hot as it is. If we go along with that, and I know we're going to be equipped, because some firefighters have talked to me about, you know, we're putting their lives even more at danger, because if you go and walk on your yard, it's very brittle out there. And if we're going to have the public display, and I know the state is coming in on this, I'd like to see us water that area down. Now, if we're going to have that, we need to water that area down. And, but I still, you know, when the public comes to us, okay, we can have this big display and fireworks going off that can set any kind of fire, and then someone can't pop firecrackers at the house. Now, I'm not for, you know, my dad almost had his finger blown off with a firecracker because I saw that. So, I'm not really into fireworks. But, you know, I think we need to look at some things here.
Ms. Harris, we've already made arrangements to wet that area down where they will be shooting those off. And, and I think you were asking about the firefighters out there in that turnout gear. They won't be wearing that the whole time, just in case of an emergency where they had to respond. That's when they put that on. They would not be standing around out there with that full turnout gear on.
Yes, sir. I apologize. I didn't make that clear. They did make that clear to me, but they were saying, you know. And I just want us to look at the lives and the safety of people.
Mr. Honeycutt, do you feel that we're equipped, and you have any doubt that we're not prepared if there's a situation that arises from the public fireworks?
No, sir. We've made all the provisions that we can. We will be there. We'll have plenty of equipment and personnel there to take care of it.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on the resolution?
No, I'm going to make one about the firefighters. You're right, man. They'll be in extreme situations. Any public safety person, police, fire, my own lineman, can have to respond under any condition necessary. Know what they're getting into. They know the risk. That's why they do the job. My guys have to go out there in the same heat, same fires. I got on Baker Road the other day. That's part of it. I hate it for them, but that's the choice they made. So, you know, I love them, and I like my own. And I wouldn't want to do it. But they do it, and they do it with pride. And they'll, they'll respond. They'll, they'll be fine. I hope nothing happens to anybody. That's, that's, it is what it is, you know?
How much of the area are we going to hose down? Because I know someone mentioned about cigarette smoking. You know, what about people throwing cigarettes everywhere? about cigarette smoking, you know, what about if people throwing cigarettes everywhere?
Yes, ma'am. That fall area is 700 feet all the way around. We'll water all that down, that fall area.
Any other questions, comments before we vote? Call roll.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
No.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
Let me ask a question here. So, maybe I'm confused on this vote. So, let me just understand how I just voted, okay?
Okay.
And not because of the way you all voted, because I have my own opinion about everything. Okay, so, we're saying, we're going to completely water down everything, this whole area, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm not trying, I'm just trying to understand the way I voted.
Yes, ma'am.
And we're going to do only for the fireworks, because they are state regulated, this activity.
Professionally done.
Professionally, okay.
Yes, ma'am. And we, and we'll be watering down that whole 700-foot area around that shoot zone.
Okay.
And everything is banned.
I see what you're saying. You made that clear. That's just what I was getting ready to ask. And I'm voting yes. I didn't, I'm changing my vote. I'm sorry. He just answered a question, and I was getting ready to ask. I apologize for the confusion. Thank you.
All right, so the resolution passes six.
Thank you, gentlemen.
To zero. Mr. Young is not present. Let me, again, express our thanks to our Murfreesboro Fire and Rescue Department for their preparations, for their planning, and for their everyday 24 hours, seven days a week, protection of our residents and our business owners and our visitors. You do an excellent job, as do all of our emergency service personnel. Anything else to come before the council at this time? If not, you're adjourned.